Okay, it's seven o'clock and we are recording. I just wanted to make sure you know though, we are not live streaming. We've been having some issues with that. So, the meetings will still be recorded and then posted on our webpage.
Okay, are we ready to go then?
We are ready.
Okay, Jamie, you want to call the roll please?
Mr. Bati.
Here.
Ms. Broadwell.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Mr. McComber.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Remus.
Here.
Ms. Sleek.
Here.
Mr. Spitler.
Here.
And Mr. Stalter.
Here.
Okay, thank you Jamie. Before we get to the items on our agenda, we want to welcome our new member Julie Broadwell, who's sitting down to my left, a couple, about three people down.
Welcome, thank you very much.
Julie's an East sider who has been active in the community in the past.
Thank you.
And she helps bring us back to full strength and we're certainly, say, welcome and we're glad to have you onboard Julie.
Thank you very much. Poor women on here, come on.
It helps in that regard also.
Yes.
The next item, item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes which have been distributed before the meeting to everyone. Are there any corrections, additions or deletions to those minutes? Okay, then the minutes are approved as distributed. Let's see here, I guess Jamie, I'm looking at the agenda, we forgot about lobby visitation on the agenda, right? I don't see it on there.
We did, please add that.
I say that this is where it should be. Lobby visitation is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to talk to us about anything that's not on tonight's agenda, for a public hearing, of which there are no public hearings tonight. But, an opportunity to talk to us about anything you would care to talk to us about. Does anyone want to address the commission tonight? Alright, I'll close the lobby visitation, we'll keep moving right along to an annexation request. We've got an annexation request for 1.52 acres located on South Dunbridge Road identified as parcel number C11-511-28000020001 from Center Township. Ryan Roth and Bueller, agent on behalf of Vicky Frobos petitioner. Heather, do you want to say anything about this request before we discuss it among ourselves?
Yes, I can. So, we received this petition from the Wood County Commissioners on July 20th of this year and once that's received by our city clerk, it's forwarded to our office and we of course put that on your agenda for consideration. Normally, you would make a recommendation to city council and have your discussion tonight would be great and in addition to that, of course, you will set the interim zoning which is next on the agenda, I should say recommend that. There is a map on the screen and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Heather? Pretty straightforward, there's nothing out there now in that area. And Vicky Frobos, who used to be veterinarian for the dog we had at the time, wants to build a veterinarian's clinic out there. Okay, no questions for Heather? Anybody want to discuss this at all? Any concerns?
Put it on the record that I have no concerns.
Okay.
Well.
Well then, I think I will make a motion that we recommend to city council that this annexation request be approved.
I'll second it.
Okay. And Jamie, I think we're ready to call the roll.
Ms. Broadwell.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. McComber.
Yes.
Mr. Remus.
Yes.
Ms. Sleek.
Yes.
Mr. Spitler.
Yes.
Mr. Stalter.
Yes.
And Mr. Bati.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved by an eight to nothing vote. Now we move on, as Heather suggested, to the interim zoning. You want to talk to us about that Heather?
Yes, I was going to pull up the map for you to look at, but of course you have that in your packet. So, the new zoning code is very similar in respect to annexation and interim zoning. So, there's not a whole lot to add or point out to you that's different, but I have the same responsibility of basically recommending the same zoning of what it's currently zoned under the Center Township zoning resolution, which is A1 agricultural. However, you have the power as the planning commission to approve any recommendation or suggest any recommendation to city council. In this case, I needed to point out that the property owner did request IE, which is innovation and employment, which does allow a facility such as the chairperson suggested, which was the veterinarian clinic, that is what she wishes to use the property for.
Okay, any questions for Heather? Any discussion?
I do have one question.
Sure.
Maybe I'm looking at this incorrectly, but the yellow box will be where she wants to put the clinic, correct? The yellow box.
That's a good question, it was something I was talking to Heather about before the meeting, it's a little confusing.
Yeah.
The yellow box is the property to be annexed, right?
Correct.
Interim zoning would apply to that.
Correct, yes.
Correct, okay, so there's.
Then when you see just below it, fronting the road there also, there's a red, red box.
Correct, yeah.
That's already part of the city, but that is, property there is what applies to the item on our agenda for the rezoning request.
Yeah.
She's asking that the red box property be rezoned to IE and she would also like the IE zoning for the annex property.
Okay, to apply to her property as well.
As an interim zoning, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that cleared up my confusion.
Yeah, it is, it is a little, I was confused also.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, well, thanks for the rest of you for asking, for Heather.
Okay, any other questions or concerns or discussion?
Well, I just want to point out too, we don't have any sort of site plan, so I can't answer Erica exactly where her clinic would be going. I think she's just getting all the pieces of the puzzle together, looking into the future.
Okay, correct, okay, thank you.
Building could even be partially on one parcel and partially on the other parcel.
Correct.
Okay.
But I was got some IE zoning adjacent to these parcels as well already, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I was just curious, do we need like 1.5 acres to have a, that's a huge piece of land?
I think it might be a little bit, excuse me, a little bit bigger than just a pet hospital. I think she's going to make it a little, a larger land, she's had this in her mind for a long time, so I think it's going to be quite extensive.
Is she still out at the Greenwood Mall currently?
She is, yes.
That's where she was, I know, several years ago.
Should I abstain myself if I take my dog there?
Okay, any other discussion?
There, it's not a conflict.
Okay, well then I will make a motion to, to put the IE zoning on this particular piece of property.
Yes.
Recommend to city council that they.
I will definitely second that, yes.
Yeah, recommend to city council. Okay, seconded I heard?
Yes.
Jamie?
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. McComber.
Yes.
Mr. Remus.
Yes.
Ms. Sleek.
Yes.
Mr. Spitler.
Yes.
Mr. Stalter.
Yes.
Mr. Bati.
Yes.
And Ms. Broadwell.
Yes.
Alright, that motion is approved, eight to zero. So, we've made that recommendation to city council. The next item on the agenda, as you can see, is a rezoning request for 1.57 acres, just slightly, ever so slightly larger than the other property. Located on South Dunbridge Road, north of 815 South Dunbridge Road and identified as parcel number B07-511-28000020002 from A1 agricultural zoning classification to IE innovation and employment zoning classification. Ryan Roth and Bueller, agent on behalf of Vicky Frobos, property owner. We need to set this for a public hearing in October.
Okay.
So, Jamie, would you take care of that for us?
Thank you Jamie.
Okay, reports, Judy, do you have something for us?
I do not, we did not meet, but we are going to be meeting next Wednesday for the zoning board and we have a couple of requests to honor.
Alrighty, thank you. Heather, I think you probably have something for us tonight.
I do, I have a couple things, I'll do my report secondary to this.
Passing that down.
So, I'm going to request that you schedule a public hearing for some changes to the zoning code that I'm requesting as a staff member of the planning department. I'm not going to go in a lot of detail because I want you to read over the information, but essentially it's text amendments to the zoning code for section 150.44 accessory uses and 150.72 off-street parking. And so, I apologize this is last minute, normally I would want to put this on the agenda, but I didn't want to also miss a month of potentially, of course, you having time to review it and then, of course, to get it on the public hearing agenda for next month. So, essentially, some of the concerns that, with the zoning code that come up happen because I'm looking at a site plan for a large project and I'm dealing with these permits every day. And so, one thing that came up, which probably seems pretty minor, but for a homeowner that wishes to do a project at their house, of course, it's a major issue. So, one thing I want to ask that you consider is patios. So, in our current code that was adopted, patios are required to basically follow the same thing as a shed, for example, or a garage. And what's happening is that our old code only required that a patio be three feet from the property line. And we're finding with the new use table for patios, that if it's basically functionally attached to the house, it cannot go into any of the same setbacks as a house, the principal structure. So, what's happening is that some of these homes are built right to the setback line and they can't add a patio, which is defined basically at grade level, it could be made out of pavers or concrete or, you know, other options for a patio. So, we're hoping to go back to the three-foot setback and not cause these potential issues and upcoming variance issues that we're seeing that are likely going to come into our office. And so, again, it's not a major issue, I think, but again, something that we wanted to address pretty quickly, because it is causing some concerns of homeowners that wish to do this. So, I would invite you to read over the packet I made a little more closely, but essentially, I'm just trying to call out patios, still as an accessory use, but that, we again, do the three-foot minimum setback. So, I gave you a copy of the current pages 51 and 52 of the zoning code and I highlighted what they're treated as now, so you can get a better idea. You go through the table and you question, you know, what size is it, basically? Is it functionally attached or is it not? And that's where you'll see that it has more of those extreme setbacks than we would have treated it, you know, just about a month and a half ago. Okay, so that, again, is under 150.44 accessory uses and we would want to add under F, a subsection D and call out patios. One other thing that we wanted to add too, is the stipulation that it cannot be located in a utility easement. And this, over the years, has been something that our utilities department has not purposely signed off on permits, because we don't want, you know, eight inches or six inches of concrete in an easement. It's much harder to remove that than it would be, for example, a fence or a small shed. So, that is something else and working with our electric superintendent, that suggesting that we add that stipulation to the three-foot. So, I thought if we're cleaning up patios, we might as well also codify that requirement. So, another larger issue that we're experiencing is under 150.72, the off-street parking code. So, as you'll hear later, I have several projects I'm working on that of industrial and commercial that have applied for permits and in looking at these site plans, I've discovered that our new code has totally eliminated any parking in the front yard. And the front yard is defined as anything between the structure and the front property line. Our prior zoning code basically allowed parking in the front yard, but out of the front yard setback, if you're following me. I know, again, all this is, can get very technical and based on definitions.
So Heather, is this somebody parking in the front yard right across the street? So, this building right here, where you have two parking spaces in front of, is that considered the front yard?
It could be, I apologize because I can't see that.
I'm trying to visualize what you're saying.
Right.
And what you just said is, that may be in the setback, right?
Correct.
Where the property sits, but they have parking.
Correct.
Okay.
So, the, so the old code would allow parking in the front yard, but not in the front setback. So, it could potentially go in front of a building, but not be in the 25-foot front yard or the 35.
Not be in the step bar from the street.
Correct. So, the new code basically allows no parking in the front yard, unless you meet the stipulations of section 150.72, which I gave you a copy of, under 1A and 1B. So, if the parking activity is located on a lot that fronts Wooster Street or Main Street and they are going to provide the buffering and screening that we require, which is the stone piers and the wrought iron fencing that you'll see on Wooster, there's a couple properties. So, if people are willing to install that, they can have parking in the front yard, again on Main and Wooster. So, the second way you can have parking in the front yard is that if it's on a driveway. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of us have a driveway at our house and you can park your cars there. So, that's another example of that. In addition to that, we have a portion of the code that says also, your driveway can only be a maximum of 10 feet, if it's residential or line up with your garage, whether that be part of the house or a detached garage. So, in this case, you know, a lot of our properties now have parking in the front yard. Not in the front yard setback, some are, but some aren't. And so, what our struggle has been, you know, we have this, you know, a large industry that wants to build in the city or add, add to their current building and they can't utilize any of their front yard. Even if the building is 80 feet off the road, they can't use any of that front of the structure based on this new code. So, what I'm asking is that you consider what I've written up, I would say it's, it's very simplified, again, looking at industrial zoning, which would be in our case, the IE, it's now called innovation and employment. And then, I'm also wanting you also to look at the Interstate Commerce District, because I also feel that we have certain uses that are allowed in the Interstate Commerce and also commercial, that almost have to have parking in the front to survive. And not only parking, it's also vehicular accessways. So, picture gas stations, picture car washes, picture nursing homes, picture banks, just picture everything in our city that, you know, needs an access drive to even just circulate around the building. So, what this says is that you can't have those or parking in the front yard, again, which is between the building and the front property line. So, these are the kinds of issues that, in looking at site plans, you know, I panicked a bit, like, oh no, this is going to be an issue. So, that's why I brought this up to you, is that, again, my priority is the innovation and employment, allowing if they're outside their own setback for that IE zoning, that they could have a parking lot or an access, or vehicular accessway. Again, not asking that to go right to the property line, that's not what I'm proposing, just, you know, just this grand scale of buildings and for several, you know, reasons that I tried to put in the memo I wrote to you, that you give some consideration to that and also the Interstate Commerce. I mean, I almost thought too, commercial, we may want some additional considerations for that, but the issue with commercial is that the new zoning code doesn't have a minimum setback. So, that was my concern, if we threw commercial into here too, that you're not, you're really not changing anything, because you can put the building right up to the setback, so it, it wouldn't require parking be setback further. And I didn't want that to be an issue with the buffer we're trying to build along Wooster and Main Street for parking. Does that make sense? Because if they can go on the parking, or, you know, right up to the property line anyways, they don't have to do the buffer. So, I didn't want to really cancel that out, because that's really been a priority, you know, of our past planning documents, to really buffer parking and make it look nicer. So, I have no idea if I just threw a lot at you and it makes sense, or if you have further questions, but certainly, we have a month to read through this and then hold the public hearing and have further discussion. And, you know, there's going to be other things that I'm going to want to change, but these were the absolute priority that I wanted to get started, because it's causing us some issues to really, you know, work with developers and owners. And I'm not saying issues are bad, I mean, this is just something on a grander scale, I feel, needs to be addressed, because it's a whole different character for industry, you know, a bit on the outskirts of town than the character of our downtown. I mean, clearly, we don't want parking lots all over our downtown and on the front of properties. So, I just wanted to kind of give you that misnomer of, you know, this is the difference with industry and, you know, the different characters to create in our different zones and districts.
Okay, thank you Heather, I think we all could have anticipated with adopting an entirely new zoning code, there were going to be some issues that came up, because we hadn't had a chance to fully digest every little thing in that long document.
Right.
When I was on city council, we had, I forget what the issue was, but we had a similar situation arise. So, there's nothing wrong with having these issues come up, there'll probably be a few more, as you suggested, before we're all said and done. And now, I want, I do want to ask, we would have a public hearing, then would we make a recommendation to city council?
Yes.
What we would be doing?
Correct.
Well, and I think the important thing is that you are bringing them to our attention and that you will continue to do that Heather, because, again, like he said, that was an entire huge document that was not feasible. I mean, it was not feasible to go through all of that and say, oh yeah, let's pass this and then not have any issues. So, it's great that you're bringing that to our attention, because that's what we're here for. We want to make sure that it is conducive for the inner-city, like downtown Bowling Green and for other commercial and industrial properties. So, thank you Heather, it's awesome.
Okay, Jamie, you'll put that on the docket for the next meeting then.
Nate had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
One, yes, you've laid it out pretty clearly and thank you. And I know you've thought this through quite a bit, but anytime you make a change to a document like this, there's a potential for side effects, unintended consequences. Other than the buffering issue on the commercial zoning, anything else that has popped up that you see as a potential issue, unintended consequence of this that we should be looking at?
Not that I could think of. I'm actually, overall, pretty happy with this section of the code. I do have some other concerns that have come up, but this was, like I said, the main issue that I wanted to get out there. I have, I've been dealing with some buffering, street trees and the landscape islands and the perimeter landscaping that is, let me use the right word here, it's becoming a little bit overkill, that's probably not a good word, but in working with some developers, I'm finding that there's a lot, a lot of landscaping and buffering, which is what our community wanted and it's really, really important, but when you're, when you're layering all these together, that's when it's becoming a bit much, you know, to have 120 trees on a small site, because they need, you know, X, Y, Z. That's something else I'm trying to work through, the best way to present that back to you as a planning commission and then city council. But again, I think, like you just said Nate, I don't want to tweak something else and then we're losing out on something. So, I'm struggling a bit with figuring out what the right answer is for that issue right now, but again, that was a secondary issue to me than the placement of parking on these projects.
But with respect to these items, nothing that you're aware of?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go back to the first part that you talked about? When you're seeing site plans and seeing that there's no room for patios, is that mostly on the side setback that you're seeing issues? Or is it in the rear setback?
It's more so the rear setback than the sides.
So, the houses are being put that far back that there's not room for a patio to go outside or to stay inside the setback?
Well, there's a lot of prongs to that question. So, off the bat, we always have issues with corner lots. Corner lots have always been a struggle, because they have two, you know, as Judy is sitting on the zoning board. So, you know, some people are trying to fit as much as they can on these lots and another prong to that issue is, there's only X amount of lots in the city. So, when somebody wants to build their dream house on a lot that they can number one afford, sort of afford, and again, in their price range, there's only so many lots available, so they can't necessarily make it fit. Does that make sense? So, then they want to just do a simple 12 by 12 patio and we're, the deliverer of bad news, sorry, you can't do that, you're already built to your setback line. So, the other issue to that too, is that we're seeing more ranch homes being built and ranch homes clearly take up more property.
Sure.
And so, again, if they just want to have an at-grade patio and we're telling them, sorry, you can't, and then they're like, well, wait a minute, I could build my house, but I can't build a patio. You know, it just, it's a, kind of a mixed message to them, because to them, a house is a much, much, you know, a bigger structure on a lot than a patio. And so, again, that's why we're presenting it, it seems to make sense that a patio is not as intrusive.
I was just trying to get a feel for if something like this happens and we go to the three-foot and the majority of these issues were on side setbacks, we had patios, like side by side, right, all over the place.
Sure.
Okay.
And I did think about that a little bit, because, you know, with the new R2 zoning, you can have one side yard, that's a minimum five feet, and then the other side yard can be zero. So, I can see where someone comes to us and says, well, you know, being blatant here, that's dumb, I could build my house up to the setback, but I can't build my patio. So, I thought about that too, but then I thought, we're trying to really have a simplified zoning code, not a code where we're going to page 21 and then 52 and then back to one and, or back to definitions. So, I thought it's just, again, the three-foot seemed fair and it seemed, again, to coincide with our last code, that we really rarely saw an issue with a patio.
Yep.
And, and also, think of a broader picture with this, we don't always have patios that are attached to the house. A lot of them are in ground pools, so they want to build, you know, a service walk around the pool and then they want a larger patio on the end, because of they have their lawn furniture. So, it's not really just adjacent to the house, it's also around an in-ground pool. And then sometimes people have it in their backyard, because they want to put a gazebo on it. So, there's a lot of different circumstances.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
So, I'm just kind of curious about what was the purpose of putting these restrictions? Was it that to have enough of green space so that the water, was it the rainwater issue? Or was it that, that, you know, people do not build multiple houses in the same property and so we're kind of putting restrictions in place, so that we kind of make sure that it's not densely populated? So, I was just kind of wondering about the rationale behind these restrictions to begin with.
Well, I can just tell you that the reason for the new code is that patios weren't specifically addressed in the old code. So, we knew we had to have patios named and put somewhere and so, they're basically an accessory use to a house, for the most part. And so, that's why we asked that it go in that section, but I think, you know, when they made that table, it just got kind of lumped into other accessory uses, but then it didn't make sense. So, I know once in a while we'll get a concern from a neighbor that the patio is too close or that person's shed's too close. And so, I think setbacks were made to try to have that, that lightened space and that feeling of, of, you know, safety and just, that's why, where they came from. I can't speak for the patio, why it was done that way before, but I think, again, it was just because it's an at-grade level patio and not a structure that's, you know, 18 feet tall and.
But sure, so you have a patio, but you could build a deck on it and then essentially you're, you are, you're over the fence and you're looking into someone's house, right? Like, so, there is, there is an issue of privacy there and essentially, if you have a patio and a deck on it, then six-foot fence won't do much, because.
Yeah, well, and then a deck is not, is not related to a patio, a deck is considered part of the house in addition. And so, it can't go into the required setbacks for your zoner district, wherever you're at.
This is just about patios.
Right, at-grade level patios. You know, there's a difference too, some people will build a concrete porch that's 18 inches tall, that would be considered part of the house and not meet the definition of a patio.
Okay, do you have anything else for us tonight Heather?
Oh, yeah, sorry, got so involved in that. So, I do have a brief report, if you mind passing that down.
Sure.
Okay, so, speaking of single-family houses, we have had 25 single-family houses so far this year, which compared to 13 last year is quite an increase, almost double. So, I thought that was interesting to point out. And we have had nearly the same amount of total permits, so 267 zoning permits so far this year compared to 262 at this time last year. Last year, we did have two commercial buildings started compared to two also this year. So far, we've had zero industrial and again, this is totally new construction, not looking at additions. And then we had two industrial new construction starts last year. So, as far as new commercial industrial permits, we have not issued any since our time together last month, but we do have several on hold, which is in addition to VTAC, that is at 2124 Woodbridge Drive. MAC Vault is doing an addition, they're at 507 Derby Avenue. Applebee's, that new construction will be at 1175 South Main Street, we're close to issuing that permit, just kind of some last-minute issues we're working through. And then AgPro is doing a lot, very large addition at 829 West Newton Road, that used to be the old BG rental that they purchased. And then we have a permit application for new construction at the southeast corner of East Wooster and South Dunbridge, it's called Quick Trip, that we are currently reviewing, very early stages. For subdivisions, we have a replat of the Interstate Commerce subdivision, which is which is at the southeast corner of Dunbridge and Wooster. And then we have a preliminary drawing for Falcon Point subdivision that is going to be on Newton and Brim Road. And we have provided all the staff comments for that, so we're just waiting on that developer to turn those comments around to us. And eventually, once staff is happy, that will end up at the planning commission for review. As far as the other reminders I have, so the new zoning code, the training is on Thursday, September 21st, in this room, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Downtown Forward, as I understand it, they will be doing a final report to council on September 18th, and maybe Mark, you have more of an update on that than I do.
That's correct.
All right.
Our committee has finished. So we came through with the recommendations, and I think the group is putting together a presentation. There will be a presentation for city council. And it's been good, it's been over a year, right? So there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of positive feedback from the community and members, and the biggest challenge, like it is with everything, when you finish up a committee like that, is, all right, now, are we actually going to do anything? Or are we just going to give a nice report of all these things that people want to see done? So the action part is really, I think, what is important. I know the mayor would like to see some things happen. I feel like there's some low-hanging fruit with some of the things that were, that came out of that group. So I'm excited to get it presented, and hopefully see some things happen, too.
Great, we're excited to see that, too. So our access management policies and guidelines, we are updating those. We had received qualifications for two companies, so we're working through those, and hopefully hiring one of those companies from there. And our subdivision regulations, which is Chapter 151 of the ordinances, we received one proposal from a company to update those, and we're currently reviewing that. Staff is, so we'll look forward to getting that started at some point. That's another big project. So as you can tell, we are not low on projects at the city. We have a lot going on. I also wanted to point out to you that city council is discussing legislation to amend Sections 150.85 through 91, titled Nonconformities of the Zoning Code. They're having their public hearing tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. And they are also discussing legislation that's authorizing a temporary reduction and/or moratorium of certain residential building permit fees. The second reading was on September 5th, and so that is kind of part of our, you know, our goal of economic development in the city, is trying to get more housing here and different, a variety of housing. So that has been discussed and introduced to city council for that purpose. I also want to give you a heads-up on Historic Preservation Commission. So they did receive a certified local government grant for $18,000 to install historical interpretive signage in the downtown and around the downtown, which Mark also came up, because of the Downtown Forward, too, in trying to kind of sink that, the potential of what your recommendations are, and also the signage. Certainly, it will be a great asset to the downtown, and hopefully attract visitors, and of course, educate our community on local history. So we have a committee that's also working on that signage, because that will be the hard part, right? You know, our local history, and what buildings to highlight, what people to highlight, and what certain events to highlight, and seeing old pictures on these signs. I think it'll be a really neat thing that we will all see at some point. And also, just want to give you a heads-up, related to the downtown, two self-guided audio tours recently came out, and I gave you a copy of that press release. And also, I couldn't remember if I told you about the Building Doctor program that's being held on October 19th and 20th here at the city for free, and I gave you a copy of that. We'll have a more detailed press release coming out. But I thought it was important, because I know part of our planning documents in the city that I know all of you have seen is the importance of our downtown, and how authentic it is, authentic it is, and those historic buildings. So again, just wanted to point out all the work that different people are doing to really try to make that, maintain this, you know, beautiful crown jewel we have here in the city. So I think that's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Heather? Anything else for the good of the order tonight? All right, I'll move for adjournment.
Second.
Second in. We are adjourned.